Welcome to the March 10, 2025, meeting of the Long Meadow Select Board. This is Select Board Chair Veneet Hamavati. I'll be confirming that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Dan Zworko? Connect the audio. He's here. Andrew Liam?
Here.
Mark Gold?
Here.
Josh Levine. Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Lynn Simmons?
Here.
This open meeting of the Long Meadow Select Board is convened in person and via Zoom webinar as posted on the agenda on Town's website, identifying how the public may join. There's no chat or Q&amp;A function. All of the materials for this meeting are available on the agenda posted on longmeadowma.gov. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless I note otherwise. This meeting will feature resident comment. For residents attending the meeting in person, please raise your hand when we get to the comments section of the meeting, and I will call on you to approach the microphone. For residents participating in the meeting via Zoom webinar format, please use the raise hand icon at the bottom of the screen. The meeting moderator will promote you to panelists, unmute you, and give you permission to speak. If you join the webinar by phone, dial *9 to raise your hand and *6 to mute/unmute. Residents who wish to speak will identify their names and addresses only. Each individual is afforded three minutes for comments. Please note this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking. If anyone in attendance is recording this meeting, please announce yourself now. It'll be online, right? Okay. Great. We will now begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
All right. And now we'll move into Select Board announcements.
Are we going to have the others committees called to order or not to?
I think until the joint meeting. Select Board announcements. Our annual Town Meeting is set for May 13 in the Long Meadow High School Gymnasium. The Town Manager's Budget Presentation and the First Draft Warrant Review will be held at the March 24 Select Board Meeting. The Board will vote to close and sign the final warrant on April 7. For additional information, please visit longmeadowma.gov/TownMeeting. Nomination papers are available for the June 3 Annual Town Election. Residents interested in running for elected office may obtain nomination papers by contacting the Town Clerk's Office at townclerk@longmeadowma.gov or 413-565-4103 to schedule an appointment. Find additional resources, including open terms and the full election calendar, at longmeadowma.gov/elections. The Town of Long Meadow is seeking your assistance in creating the cover to the 2024 Annual Report. Please submit your original photo or drawing by March 14 at noon for a chance to be featured on the cover of the Annual Town Report. For additional information and guidelines to submit, please visit longmeadowma.gov/civiclearts. The Town of Long Meadow is pleased to announce the commencement of a new curbside trash and recycling hauling contract effective July 1. This contract ushers in a significant advancement in waste management services with fully automated curbside trash and recycling pickup to improve efficiency and convenience for residents. The Town is currently in the phase of getting feedback on sizing for carts. Please take a moment to complete our survey to share your feedback on what cart size you feel suits your household for recycling. Complete the survey and find additional information at longmeadowma.gov/recyclingcarts. All right. And with that, we will move into resident comments. I don't see any residents in person. Any online?
Yes.
Hi, Melissa. Can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
Yes. Great. Thank you for joining us. If you could start with your name, address, and I'll give you three minutes here to make a comment.
Okay. Thank you. My name is Melissa Shetler. I'm a resident at 34 Ellington Street. I'm calling with concern, I'm zooming in with concerns that appropriate oversight is not being given to large-scale construction projects in town. Although it appeared that there were good intentions in mitigating traffic, the Eversource project efforts have broken down significantly. We were advised, and Ellington Street residents on Ellington Street were advised only after raising the issue, that a pre-construction meeting with Eversource was held for the latest project, and it was agreed that detour signs were not placed. At that time, it was indicated that the DPW would be following up with their contacts at Eversource to require the signs to be placed. Cardboard signs and cones were placed on Thursday and Friday on the street of last week and were not enforced by any police officers. Now, just three business days after traffic controls were finally implemented, they are gone. There are no cones, no detour signs, no road closure signs, and no police presence. Today, we experienced a high volume of trucks, as we have been, including a PVTA bus, which was new to the mix. The real issues of safety exist in our neighborhood and others from Forest Glen to Bliss. Due to the lack of traffic controls and appropriate detour signage, we are now experiencing all modes of traffic on our street, often two ways, including one incident with five 18-wheeled tractor trailers that were attempting to utilize Ellington Street at the same time. Traffic was halted in both directions as the drivers had to navigate the traffic issue on their own because there was zero police presence. A picture of the incident was sent to the Town Administrator. If the Town has been on notice of increasing traffic concerns in our neighborhood for years and has done nothing to permanently address the issue, now due to the lack of initiating collaborative discussion to work on a permitted fix with the residents of our neighborhood and lack of traffic controls implemented as a result of the project, you have now encouraged major traffic to utilize Farmington, Ellington, and other side streets as a matter of course to seek alternate routes. With the advent of warmer weather, this week brings numerous children riding their bicycles or walking to school at peak commuting times. There are no crossing guards between Converse and Bliss until you get to Bel Air on the Long Meadow Street side, and no crossing guards between Converse and Bliss until you get to Bliss on the Laurel Street side. It has been, the Town has been advised of a half-painted crosswalk and lack of traffic controls. Of note, let's see, sorry, lost my place. Of note, during the project last summer, the crosswalk was dug up at Ellington and Long Meadow intersection. It has not been repainted. And a car accident occurred last week at the intersection of Farmington and Laurel. We are disappointed in the lack of oversight of this and future projects, and hopeful that the Select Board will take a harder look at how these projects are managed.
Great. Thank you so much, Melissa.
You're welcome.
And anyone else here for resident comment? You raise your hand. And then, I don't know if we missed Sarah as having recording the...
She did not raise her hand to say that she was, but...
Okay. All right. That sounds good. All right. So, note, we don't have any more resident comments. We'll move into Select Board comments. Mark?
I have two. First of all, I participated in the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission's Metropolitan Planning Organization, that's their traffic group, review. And at that, the latest one, they reviewed TIP projects. TIP stands for Traffic Improvement Program, projects generally funded by the state and/or federal governments for the next five years. As we all know, this Long Meadow project, it's called 608881, which is the north end of Route 5, and that's moving forward for construction in the fall of this year. However, there's another project, the Long Meadow Street Project, second phase of Route 5, it's 612257. And that's for the south end of town. And I've been talking about how projects are getting more expensive and slipping. Well, 612257 has slipped. It's now scheduled for funding in 2029, although could move up theoretically to 2028. Chances of that happening are, as they say in them, slim to none because of the excess costs of all the projects that are already there. I, you know, I've already, when I got off the meeting, I sent a note to Sean and to Lynn about this with, they got charts and graphs and all kinds of stuff, but it just says that our construction on the south end of Route 5 is being further delayed, and I think people should know about it. The other thing is that Lynn reported it in her monthly report, but I want to recognize two people, Lisa Oxen at the DPW and Arlene Miller from the Recycling Committee. They were extremely instrumental. They made the application, and they got us a grant for assisting with the purchase of the recycling bins that Veneet was speaking about earlier. It's a substantial amount of money. It's $88,000. It's going to go a long way toward helping us implement the revised recycling system. For people who are concerned or question it, the numbers speak for themselves. The trash contract was bid two ways, one with what we've currently got, and another with totally automated systems, which included automated recycling. And the savings were extraordinarily substantial in the seven figures number. And so, that's why we're moving to automated recycling, not because we want to make people's lives miserable, we think it'll actually make lives easier. But the cost savings just really forced the hand of the town to move to automated recycling. And this grant to help us purchase those recycling bins will go a long, long way. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Anything from a Select Board remote? No? Okay. All right. Great. So with that, we can now move along to the Town Manager's Board.
Thank you. So, happy to announce that we received a MassDOT Safe Roots to School Bike Rack Grant. MassDOT announced the winners of the 2024-2025 Bike Rack Grant through its Safe Roots to Schools program. This is in its, this grant opportunities in its second year, and it helps schools replace old, worn, or damaged bicycle racks or acquire new or additional bike racks. All Safe Roots to School Partner schools were encouraged to apply. Bike racks are intended to be ordered and installed within the current school year. Each selected winner receives the funding necessary for the acquisition and installment of two to five bike racks. Over 60 applications were submitted, and three schools or communities were selected throughout the state for this year. I'm thrilled to say that Blueberry Hill Elementary is one of those three schools approved. The natural grass and artificial turf study was completed, this, as a reminder, was funded through a citizen petition at the May 2024 Annual Town Meeting. There's a bit about the background of it in my report here, but I want to announce that the study has concluded. A link is available on the Town Manager page. It's also on the homepage of the Town website. The public presentation for the study will be April 3, and more details on the presentation will be shared soon, including the time and location. The Town Clerk's Office has been working on software to modernize the office and streamline the dog license process. They're in the process of onboarding with Permitlink, which is the same software used by the Building Department. We anticipate the new software would have gone live today. That was the plan. This is going to provide more efficiency for the department and better service for constituents. You'll be able to renew dog licenses online. Eventually, we'll be branching out to all vital records through this, as well as business licenses. As Mark spoke about in Select Board comment, the Recycling Partnership Grant was applied for by Lisa and Arlene, and I'm happy to say that Long Meadow did receive it. We're going to get direct financial assistance from the Recycling Partnership in the amount of $88,000. We'll also receive a wide range of technical assistance and in-kind support as we work to implement standardized cart-based residential curbside recycling collections. This grant's going to help subsidize the Town's cost of purchasing these new carts. The Town's been pursuing a municipal aggregation plan, and in a March 3, 2025, letter to the Town, we were informed that the municipal aggregation plan was approved by the Department of Public Utilities. More information is going to be available very soon as we roll out the plan. And also, as Mark spoke about, the Long Meadow Street TIP Phase 2 project, this is with a MassDOT project also in the queue for TIP funding. This is Long Meadow Street from Forest Glen to Converse Street. That's happening this summer. Phase 2 is Converse Street to approximately Bernie Road. There's an image in my report showing the bounds of this project. The design consultant is VHB, and we are at the 25% design milestone. Once that milestone is reached, a design public hearing is required, and includes attendance by MassDOT, VHB, and the Town. The public is strongly encouraged to attend and to see this 25% design and answer question, I'm sorry, ask questions, provide feedback, and there'll be consultants there, as I mentioned, to answer those questions. This is going to be in-person and virtual and is tentatively scheduled for May 8, with more details to follow. That concludes my report tonight. Happy to answer any questions you have.
Great. Thank you so much, Lynn. A lot on the report tonight. Yeah, and I just want to underscore the last item, the TIP Phase 2 project, and public getting a chance to understand this project at this point, ask questions, provide feedback. Like, this is the time to do it. And, you know, we've seen some of this confusion with some of the recent projects and, you know, folks feeling like they didn't have a chance to voice their concerns or their thoughts, so this is the time to do it for this project. Anything else from the Board? Dan?
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Great. Thanks for going through that, Lynn. On the section from Converse Street to Bernie, when is that supposed to be started and completed?
We're just in 25% design, so these projects take many years. We, next big milestone would be 75%. That will probably be several years away, and we're at least five years out from construction, at least.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Great. Anything else? Okay. Thank you, Lynn. Now, we will move into old business, and we will move right into the School Department Budget Presentation. So, we'll open up our joint meetings, so I'll give you all a chance to open up your own meetings.
Thank you. Thank you for welcoming us here tonight. We look forward to presenting you with our FY26 School Department Budget. We'll begin by calling the March 10, 2025 School Committee Meeting to order. Just when I say your name, say "here" so we know you're here. Michaela?
Here.
Estelle?
She's muted.
Here.
Thank you. Jamie?
Here.
And me as well. Thank you. And we'll turn over to Dr. O'Shea.
One second, I'll let the Finance Committee as well open up their meeting.
I'm calling the Finance Committee March 10 meeting into order. For just calling people on the phone?
Yeah, I mean, you can, you can...
So, Colleen, if you can say "here" when I call your name. Kara Stevens?
Here.
Okay. Tim Mitchell?
Here.
John Denine?
Here.
Dust McConnell?
Here.
It's hard to remember all the names. Tony Garrett. Eric Winer. Okay, we're in order.
Thank you. And thank you all for joining us tonight. And, you know, obviously, this is very important, and ready to hear the presentation. Turn over to you.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate the chance to present the voted FY26 budget to the Select Board. This budget was voted and approved by the School Committee at its February 11 meeting. So, some of the slides in here say "recommended budget." Understood that it's actually the voted budget from February 11. So, as the Select Board understands, it's a long-budget journey. I have, March 17, actually, it should be March 24 is our understanding, if we're in the Town Manager, we'll present the FY26 budget to the Select Board. But as everyone fully understands in this room, that it's, it doesn't mean anything is certain. There's certainly a lot of variables in front of us that need to be pinned down. So, you can advance, Lynn. I won't linger on this too long, but we are certain that the budget is a reflection of our strategic goals and in the areas of curriculum, inclusive practice, embedding the vision of the graduate in creating safe and supportive schools. You know, when you look at the planks of that strategic plan, I think it probably is apparent to most that there's a lot of work that is represented there that is, really reflects the changing face of education. It reflects the reality of educating students in 2025. There's so much in there that perhaps was not on our plates or not fully on our plates years ago, but, you know, in order to serve students effectively, we want to be responsive to their, to their safety. We want to create opportunities for digital learning. We want to be supportive of all the diverse learner identities that join us each day in Long Meadow Public Schools. So, to, you can go to the next slide, please. So, to start at the end, this is the highest-level summary of the voted budget. The voted budget from the School Committee would ask for an additional $1.287 million from the Long Meadow General Fund. We are projecting an increase in special revenue, which we can explain later. The total budget, total voted budget was $44,852,879, which is a $1.4 million increase over FY25. So, I'll back up a little bit, and you can go to the next slide, and just provide some broad context for the building blocks of a school budget. And so, there are sort of four blocks that we'd like to think about in terms of building the school budget. Chapter 78, which represents about 15% of our overall budget. The minimum local contribution. Those two things taken together represent required net school spending. Another way of thinking about the two sort of salmon-colored blocks there is to think about those as the foundation budget. And I just want to kind of underscore that phrase for a minute, because I think it's worth all of our attention to really understand, the foundation budget is to understand the cost of educating students in 2025. So, we're fortunate in Long Meadow that, like many, many communities, Long Meadow supports us above what is minimally required. And then on top of that are grants, sometimes entitlement grants, sometimes competitive grants. And so, those, again, to kind of, to hit that, I just want to linger on that foundation budget for a minute, because it's, that's a figure that we should sort of track over time to really understand the cost of educating students, so that we can advance. For those who prefer words, to the pictures, essentially says the same thing, that the required local contribution plus whatever state aid is calculated is, represents the foundation budget. It's what we must spend in order to comply with state law. It's what we must spend in order to minimally educate students as defined by the state. So, that state aid is calculated. I won't get into the weeds, but the next slide depicts the, not expecting you to, at all, to read this, but maybe just to illustrate the complexity of how the state determines Chapter 78 levels. Chapter 78 levels are essentially based on a community's, based on the demographics of a student body. And then the minimum local contribution is based on a community's ability to pay. It's based on wealth factors that are identified by the Department of Revenue. And so, you know, the demographics, there's certain allocation from Chapter 70 based on the demographics of the student body. If, depending on the number of special education students, the number of English-language learners, the number of students that are identified as low-income, these all drive Chapter 78 levels. So, the next slide shows us the escalation of the foundation budget. And again, if you think of the foundation budget as what the state says we should minimally spend each year, you'll notice that the incline is steeper on the foundation budget than it is on Chapter 78. So, the gap between Chapter 78, the aid that Long Meadow receives directly from the state, and, and the foundation budget levels has grown in recent years, and that puts additional strain on Long Meadow, and it puts additional strain on local communities everywhere. Chapter 78 has increased. The state has made, you know, an improved effort to provide cities and towns with additional Chapter 78, but the reality is, Chapter 78 increases have not kept pace with the cost of doing business. They've not kept pace with inflation. They've not kept pace with salaries. It's not kept pace with transportation or special education costs. So, I think that this slide is really sort of meant to represent the challenge of kind of maintaining the level of support that we've enjoyed over the years. And so, where do these fiscal pressures come from? Obviously, they come from some of the inflationary factors that I just mentioned, but in terms of student need, we are responding to a different generation of students, different students with different needs who need different levels and types of support. We're seeing students needing more social-emotional supports, more mental health supports, more behavioral supports, and that obviously comes at, comes at a cost. It comes at a need for additional investment. Technology has played an increasing role in public education, obviously. The number of devices, the amount of software has increased, and necessarily, the breadth of the network has increased. And so, all of these are things that drive costs as well. Special education, you'll see later that particularly the cost of out-of-district placements has grown significantly, as have the number of students that have been identified as needing individual education plans. Transportation has been a significant cost driver as well. I'd say all of the bullets that you're seeing here are bullets that every community has experienced. This is not unique to Long Meadow. The transportation increases that we've seen, the cost increases that we've seen, are being played out in community after community across the state. In the Select Board's meeting packet, I included a lengthy, three-page statement written by the signatories that are depicted here. So, together, the Mass Association of School Committees, the Mass Association of School Superintendents, various teachers' unions, the Massachusetts PTA, and other groups came together to write a statement about the fiscal challenges that communities are facing due to rising costs around educating kids. And I'd encourage the Select Board, if you haven't, I'd encourage you to read that statement carefully. I think it really paints a very fair and good and accurate picture of some of the strains that our communities are facing in 2025. So, really put that there. It's not often that you see, quite honestly, it's not often that you see all of the entities listed here signing off on a, on a particular position or a particular platform. So, I think that ought to tell us something, that that statement had the support of all of these groups. Next slide? Thanks. To sort of graphically represent the transportation increases, the cost increases that we've experienced in recent years, this is both to support regular and special education students and also to support students that are participating in a technical education program over in West Springfield at the LPVC School on Brush Hill. So, this has been a significant cost driver for us. Some of this just simply relates to the cost, the personnel cost, some of it relates to the cost of buses, some of it relates to the number of students that are participating in career and technical education as well. The next slide shows us the increase in special education costs for circuit breaker-eligible costs. The circuit breaker is a state fund that reimburses municipalities for special, 75% of special education costs that exceed a certain threshold. So, if you have a placement that is particularly expensive, the state does provide some relief in the form of the circuit breaker, but the cost of these out-of-district placements has increased dramatically in recent years. Last year, I think it was up 14%. This year, it's come down, but it's still above historic levels in terms of the costs of those out-of-district placements. And that's a cost that is sort of monitored and regulated by the state. So, these are two, you know, things that are driving some of the challenges, the fiscal challenges that we're facing. Next slide, please. Each year, I think the Select Board tries to get some understanding of how our expenditures compare to expenditures in other communities, and you'll see that our in-district per pupil cost at $16,683, that it actually is on the, very much on the lower end of what we see in the Pioneer Valley. So, I guess I would suggest to the Select Board and the Finance Committee that the budget that the School Committee has put together is a, sort of a reasonable proposal. It's a proposal that I think shows, reflects some of the challenges we're facing. It's a responsible proposal. Our costs really compare favorably in a fiscal sense to the Pioneer Valley districts that are listed here. And I guess I would add that certainly our, our performance, at least as judged by the MCAS scores that are shown here... we're facing. It's a responsible proposal. Our costs really compare favorably, in a fiscal sense, to the Pioneer Valley districts that are listed here. And I guess I would add that certainly our, our performance, at least as judged by the MCAS scores that are shown here, compares favorably. So I guess I would argue that there's a significant return on the investment that we're making here in Long Meadow. And the next slide tracks our per pupil costs in relation to similar districts by relative wealth. So the state will put us in a cohort of communities with a similar wealth factor. And again, and some of these communities are in Western Mass, some are not, but either way, you'll see that our in-district per pupil costs are on the lower end of the range that you see here. And again, I would still say that our MCAS scores compare favorably. So another slide depicting the, I would say, strong return on investment that we get. Thank you. Next slide. This is meant to show here in Long Meadow, the increase in students that are deemed to be either economically disadvantaged or low-income. So in 2014, 2015, by the state's metric, about 5.9% of students were deemed to be economically disadvantaged. Phrase that's used more recently is, is students are determined to be low-income if they're below a certain threshold, 11.7%. So you'll see that the number of students who are, who are in these high-needs category is sort of regularly increasing for us here in Long Meadow. I think it's, it's probably something that you'll see in many communities, particularly in the western part of the state. The foundation budget, to go back to this, you'll see that the foundation budget, again, the calculation of the minimum amount needed to provide an adequate education by the state's calculation, has gone up here in Long Meadow by about $1.3 million. And I just want to kind of ask you to remember that, to hold on to that number in your heads for a minute, that $1.3 million, because it sort of ties into some of the requests that you'll see To offset that $1.3 million increase in the foundation budget, we can only expect, at least according to the governor's budget, a hold harmless amount equal to $75 per student. So Chapter 78, on a $7.5 million fund source of revenue, is only projected to increase by $204,000. That means that really the burden of filling the gap between last year's costs and this year's costs is largely going, is falling on local communities. And again, the story we're seeing here is a story that's being played out across the Commonwealth. To underscore it, Chapter 70 has increased significantly in recent years. It just has not kept pace with the costs that we're incurring. And so that's a concerning number. I'm hoping that the legislature will sort of step up and increase the hold harmless amount. Last year, we received $110,000, $110, $110 per student in hold harmless aid. So even if it went to 110, that would be really helpful to our community. That's the governor's budget right there, though. To give you some sense of Chapter 78 in recent years, again, you'll see that the increases have been, have been significant, but simply haven't, the, the increase in Chapter 78 has not kept pace with the increases in the foundation budget, if you use that as kind of a metric. Next slide, please. So while the state would say that the expected minimum contribution should go up by that 4.95% amount, Chapter 78 is only projected to increase by 2.77%. So again, it would, the gap between those two is really a gap that is shouldered by local communities. Rising costs flatter Chapter 78 is the simplest way to explain it. And so to get into the details while you're all here, I suppose, the details of the budget that was voted by the school committee on the 11th, you'll see that it would propose an increase of the general fund by $1.287 million. The general fund constitutes about 92.5% of our budget. Other sources of revenue include the circuit breaker I mentioned, Metco grant, regular education and special education grants. Some of these are entitlement grants. Some of them are competitive grants, and a variety of other sources of special revenue that, if you have any questions on, we can come back to. But you'll see that largely we are reliant on the contributions from the general fund. To put the general fund increase that is projected for FY '26 in historical perspective, you'll see that the 3.2% increase that comes with the voted budget by the school committee, it really falls in line, sort of in the, it's sort of, I would say it's a, in the middle of, of the increases that we have historically benefited from. So that 3.2% increase, again, a reflection of our contractual obligations, rising costs, and some other things that we can take a look at later. Next slide, thanks. To put the, the increases and reductions in context, I would just highlight a couple things here for you tonight. On the left-hand side are areas where we anticipate reduced costs. Attrition refers to salaries associated with hiring folks who are lower on the salary scale because of retirements. We are anticipating one fewer section in kindergarten. Right now, we have 10 sections in kindergarten. Next year, we're given enrollment projections, we're looking at nine sections. None of what you see here, they're called reductions, but they're really, I wouldn't say that these are service-related. These are reductions that are related to shifting needs, changing enrollment patterns. This budget that was voted by the school committee is essentially a level service budget. We are expecting some adjustments in special education that are listed on the left, and then some smaller adjustments to supplies and services tied to some federal grants. On the right, you'll see that the biggest driver of our budget is our contractual obligations, projecting $1,332,426 associated with our expected contractual obligations. Transportation, that's one of the bigger increases I've, I've seen us needing in recent years. And it relates to serving special education students, regular education students, and busing students to the Career Tech Program over in West Springfield. So that, that transportation number is, is a, you know, again, reflects the, the rising costs of, of getting a bus on the road for various reasons. Out-of-district tuitions, we're seeing a slight uptick in the number of students who will need an out-of-district placement in order to be properly served, appropriately served. But also, the cost of those out-of-district programs has increased, as we mentioned earlier. Voke tuitions, computer software, a handful of other areas that will, that we're projecting increases in. So the net is that $1.4 million increase on the overall budget, general fund and, and special funds. Next slide, please. You'll see that we are anticipating that our overall enrollment will more or less remain steady. The number of FTEs, the number of full-time positions that we are projecting for FY '26 also remains steady from the revised FY '25 budget to the voted FY '26 If you're interested in class size, I won't linger on this too much, but I would say that we place a premium on class size in Long Meadow, and we've been able to honor that commitment. It's important to this community. It's important to our staff. It's important to kids. And so what you see here are projected class sizes for the '25, '26 school year at the elementary level. Reasonable, manageable class sizes, I would say, across the board. You can, the average is a little off there at the bottom right, so we'd have to recalculate that for you. Next slide. At the middle school level, again, in line with where we've been historically at the middle level. And then finally, our overall enrollment for '25, ' '26, this does not include students that are placed out of district. So altogether, we serve slightly over 2,800 students in Long Meadow. And really, maybe the most important slide for you this evening, and on the left are some areas that, if we pulled our administrators together and our teachers together, I suspect they would generate that list on the left. These are areas that, if we were in a position to, we would benefit from some investment in those areas. Fully funding athletics, continuing to make investments in what we call the MTSS framework, that's essentially tiered systems of support, supply, support staff, additional instructional coaching, a fully funded curriculum renewal plan, so that we're, we're able to sort of regularly make the renewal and adoptions that we need, rather than sort of, sometimes we have to pull it together based on available funds. Full-day preschool may be on the horizon. And then, we always have to be sort of responsive to special education, the needs of special education students. And so we think that there might be some opportunities that we should explore to build additional sub-separate in-district special education programs so as to reduce out-of-district costs. On the right are many of the unknowns. We continue to be in touch with the town manager and the finance director. I would just say, you know, really hit hard the point that we recognize that the voted budget may be more than is manageable, based on our conversations with the town manager. And so that's feedback that we can take back to the full committee. At the end of the day, we want to work, continue to work as partners with, with the town, with the Select Board, with the town manager's office, and the Finance Committee to put together a budget that supports student needs, but is also responsible and manageable and sustainable. And so we'll continue to be in conversation with, with Lynn and Ian to make sure that the request, the voted budget, is one that sort of fits into the bigger fiscal picture of the town. And these are all, on the right, all the things that we're watching. You know, all the things that we'll have to continue to pay attention to in the months ahead. We are working towards settling collective bargaining agreements with all of our units. We're watching what's happening at the federal level to see what impact that might have for us here locally. Final state aid levels could change. Special education, we always have to be nimble. We always have to be responsive based on the changing needs of kids. And then enrollment patterns. We, we think we have a good handle on what our kindergarten enrollment might be, but, you know, sometimes you just never know. Sometimes there's enrollment spikes that you could not have foreseen. Fee-based services, the fees that we still have to sort of pin down with the school committee, fees associated with athletic participation, preschool, and transportation, busing. So lots of unknowns that we still have to continue to track in the, in the months ahead. And I just want to say, appreciate all the conversations and information and feedback that we've had from Lynn and Ian. It's really important to us, to me and Tom Mazur, our finance director, to work in collaboration because we want to make sure that we understand the town's challenges, the town understands the challenges that we're facing. I think we have a clear understanding of that. And so we'll continue to stay in touch with Lynn and Ian, just to, in case any additional adjustments to the budget have to be made that we could ask the school committee to consider. So.
Great. Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you.
And Lynn, I don't know if you want to add anything or mention anything before we kind of open it up for questions from committees and the board?
Sure. Yeah, thanks. Just to underscore what Marty just said at the end there, we have a great relationship, and I think we're fortunate in that the town is overall, because when we have these challenges, we come together and we face them together. And so that, that needs to just be recognized, that we do have a great working relationship, and we do understand the challenges on both sides. And we want to work together to make sure that we have the best school system possible. And I know that the school department wants to make sure that the town is not harmed in trying to do that as well. And so Marty, Tom, Ian and I meet regularly, talk regularly. They understand that the challenges, we have to try to get this FY '26 budget balanced. We're not there yet. I wish I could say that we were, but I trust that we will be, and we'll, we'll get there through those continued conversations.
Great. Thank you so much. Any questions, comments from anyone here?
I don't know if the Select Board wanted to go first.
Oh, no.
So I guess, since we spent a lot of time talking about the foundation budget, we are not required by the state to spend an additional $1.4 million, because we're already well above the foundation budget.
Correct.
That is a true statement, right?
Yeah.
So we're not, there's not like some state requirement, we had to spend $1.4 million. Agreed?
Yeah. And the only reason I highlight the foundation budget is really just as a, as a benchmark, just to show us what the state would say is the, the minimum cost. They would say the foundation budget is what cities and towns are minimally required to spend. So you have to spend at the foundation level. Long Meadow goes above and beyond what is minimally required, as do many communities. So, yes.
Yeah, I just, it's an interesting number. I would love to see if there's any science behind it.
Yeah.
And knowing how long it's been there, I doubt it. But agreed, they're saying it should cost more. We're saying it should cost more. I do notice that $350,000 of the $1.4 million increase is contracted services in pupil services and school admin. So what are, what's driving those changes in contracted services? Because that's a pretty significant portion of your increase.
Is that tied back to a number that's up on the screen, or just from the detailed documents?
No, that's in your control master file.
Okay.
And so.
Ask Mr. Mazur to weigh in for us.
Lynn, if you could go back up a couple slides to the changes. It's really the transportation and out-of-district tuitions, I would say, is probably making up the majority of that increase in contracted services. Those two charges, those two expenses are categorized in contracted services.
Okay. Is that everything that you think is in there, or is there other stuff?
Utilities is probably the other one, which is a few lines farther down on that spreadsheet, which is another 16. So, and then it's, you know, copiers, printers.
Okay. So that's what falls into that one?
Telephones.
All right. And none of that has to do with just the general town IT stuff that's going through your budget as well?
Yeah, not in terms of the contracted services. I would say that we, there is some software increases, but those are usually in our supply lines that we categorize those expenses.
Is there, and it's, when you guys look at the budget, do you actually look at percent changes in line items?
Yes.
Okay. Because the stuff you put out never has percent changes on it, which makes it difficult. So in future years, it would be fun to see year-over-year percent changes. Not, it's more of a question, are we seeing more growth in the high schools? Are we seeing more growth in the elementary schools? Or is there a certain particular part of the school system that is driving larger changes than others? I guess is the thing. And I can see absolute dollar changes, but I don't have that, I can't easily calculate that. So as you think across the different schools, is there anything in particular that stands out? Like, yeah, high school, it's much harder. We just can't get science teachers, or something like that?
In terms of salaries, it's all driven by our collective bargaining agreements. So we wouldn't necessarily, you know, sometimes your applicant pools are different, at different levels. It probably are smaller in some of the advanced high school classes. I'd say that what's, what's driving it really is that those additional supports, the interventions, that the behavioral interventions, the reading interventions, the math interventions... that the behavioral interventions, the reading interventions, the math interventions, the, the behavioral health needs of students. And that's, cuts across all levels. That's pre-K to 12, really. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't necessarily say that, you know, the high school is driving costs more than the middle, more than the elementary. We do see enrollment changes that kind of ripple through, you know, that, that sort of ride like a wave through the various levels. In recent years, we were able to make some reductions in staffing at the high school due to, due to enrollment declines at the high school. For FY26, we're anticipating that high school enrollment will remain steady, so we're not going to see it there. At the elementary level, we're going to see one less classroom because of fewer students at the kindergarten level. So I hope that answers your question, maybe...
Okay, so there's not significant shifts in underlying costs?
Well, to clarify, when we're talking about educator salary, for example, there isn't a difference in what a chemistry teacher, whom I've been harder to hire versus a kindergarten teacher. The difference in pay comes down to their level of education and their years of experience. Different positions in, for educators do not pay different amounts. There isn't a high school salary versus an elementary salary, et cetera.
And I noticed that you had, you had a negative in there for attrition. Do we, when we have a position open, do we specifically try to hire younger teachers, or do we look for the most experienced teacher we can get, and then we'll pay?
We hire the best.
Okay.
I mean, you know, I, I think, all things being equal, we would ask the principals to be mindful of who they're moving along in the hiring process, but, I mean, the, the single biggest factor in a child's education probably is the teacher in front of them. And so, you know, I, generally speaking, it's, you know, probably in almost all cases, the teacher that you're hiring to replace a retiree comes in lower on the pay scale, because you typically aren't getting applicants with 25 or 30 years' experience. You're typically getting folks who have zero to five to maybe 10 years' experience. So, it, it almost takes care of itself. We, we almost always have savings associated with retirements. This year, that attrition number is maybe a little smaller than we've had in recent years. Is that fair, or is that, or maybe not?
Yeah, it's gone up a little bit since the last couple of years, or lower than what I would say our historical average has been.
So, you know, decent, a little bump in retirements probably four or five years ago, and it's kind of, maybe, maybe it happens.
Stable now.
Yeah.
And then the last question, because the finance committee is really worried about pretty much the facilities across Long Meadow, the schools being a major portion of those. And as we look at this, the schools are suffering from our inability to keep them maintained the same as the rest of the buildings are. As you guys think about the budget, and know that you are in, it, it's pretty much a catch-all between those two things, are there things that are happening in the schools right now that are detrimental to student education? That we can't address because we don't have the amount of maintenance and capital budget that we have? For instance, the snowstorm back in December, which I'm sure you got a lot more calls about than I experienced coming in. But, we didn't have staff in the town to remove snow at the speed to get kids to school that day, right? And so, it's a, it's just as you look at things like that, and do those type of things come into your conversations when you're thinking about the budget and the trade-offs in it?
Yeah, I, I think that those, those certainly, Lynn and Ian have been, emphasized that, you know, that, that we have some facility-related needs that need to be attended to. I will say, on the snowstorm thing, I don't want to leave that one out there, because our DPW actually does a great job. We, we're generally low land, flat streets, and they do a great job clearing. Sometimes the reason we are not able to open on time, or we have to cancel, is because so many people are coming from surrounding areas, and our buses are coming from surrounding areas. So I just shout out...
No, but that day, I just watched a lot of kids running through the snow up the sidewalks of the schools.
Shout out to our DPW guy, they do a great job cleaning the streets and getting our campuses ready. And sometimes there's other factors that cause us to have to delay or cancel, so.
Well, it was just, it was an obvious, like, looking through, yeah, we would need a lot more DPW if we wanted to open the school on this day on time.
Yeah.
And so, it's just as we go on, I just want to make sure that is a discussion, because particularly coming up with the new middle school.
Yeah.
And it's getting hard as a finance committee to say, hey, why should we build another building that we can't maintain?
Yeah.
And that's where we are right now on our capital maintenance budget.
The, the needs of the DPW certainly aren't lost on us, based on the conversations we've had with, with Ian and Lynn. It's been a point of emphasis, I'd say, by them.
Okay.
Yeah.
To the point that you look at that $1.4 million and say, yeah, maybe we should strive for $1.1 or $1.2? I mean, like, do you actually think of it in terms of not going for certain things?
That's, that's, I think, is part of that feedback loop that we're still in the middle of, and that, and that we have some upcoming school committee meetings, that, you know, whatever, whatever additional feedback we get from Lynn and Ian, we would want to bring that back to the school committee to, you know, because I know, well, it feels similarly that we don't want to do anything that's going to compromise, you know, some services on the town side.
Great, thank you. Marty?
Marty, again, thank you for another great presentation. Thanks for coming out today. These are always helpful. I, I have a couple of questions. One, when you talked earlier in the presentation about the minimum local contribution, you said one of the criteria, if I'm getting this right, I want to make sure I'm clear on this, was the, essentially the socioeconomics of the town, or the economics of the town. The ability of the people of the town to pay is what sets the minimum local contribution. And I just want to make sure that that's not, it's not about what are the needs of the individual children on a statewide basis, it's how much can your individual town afford to pay? And that's what sets the minimum, not how many kids you have, but how, how much you can afford to pay. Is that, that's how it came across to me. I just want to make sure that I'm not misunderstanding that.
The, so, the first thing that's calculated is the foundation budget.
Sure.
Where they, based on your demographics, based on the number of students at each level, your overall enrollment, first thing that's calculated is the, is your foundation budget. What, what a community should minimally have to spend to provide an adequate education. And then, what's determined after that is the town's ability to pay. And so, that's based on property tax, the relative wealth of the, of the town. And then, once that's established, then Chapter 70 is meant to fill in the difference.
So you're, so the, the town's ability to pay drives Chapter 70 down?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
And I, so, yeah, and I would say, to, what, what we're talking about here, the, the budget drivers are talking about, they're playing out across the state. So we are a, a minimum, we are getting the minimum increase in Chapter 78, $75 per kid. 230 communities are in the same boat as us right now, which is, it's, it's unsustainable to think that we can continue, communities anywhere can continue to maintain services in the face of a $75 per student increase. It's just, it will become increasingly difficult unless the Chapter 78 formula is changed, I think.
And that brings me to my last question on that particular subject, which is, what is the source of that figure? Is it external or is it internal? Do we report to them, or somebody like Lynn, or, or the, or the school committee, report to the state with the figures that they need that determines what they say is our ability to pay that drives Chapter 70 down? Or do they have an external force that looks at us, that we have no input in, that makes that number?
As I understand it, it's, it's Department of Revenue data that's used to determine a community's ability to pay. So it's, it's not information that we necessarily report, it's information that the state has on municipalities.
Thank you, that's, that's very clear. So, turning my attention to the additional considerations on your last page, just had a couple of questions about that. First is, on your potential areas for investment, did you, is there any rhyme or reason to the order? Are these in order of priority, or are they just sort of arbitrarily?
No. Excellent question. No particular order.
Okay.
I, I'd say, the, the MTSS framework, it's a framework that sort of defines the tiers of support that we should provide. That really is a strategic overarching goal, so I, I might highlight that, but everything else is sort of in no particular order.
I thought you might. So that was my next question, with the behavioral supports, and you mentioned this earlier, with behavioral, supports, behavioral considerations, what specific, specifically does that look like? Are we talking about people that we're hiring to help with the behavior? Can you talk about what you mean by behavioral support?
It might take the form of a board-certified behavior analyst, a BCBA. It might take the form of an RBT, which is a registered behavioral technician, that's sort of a, you know, a tier below skill-wise and training-wise. It may take the form of school adjustment counselors or school counselors. But, yeah, those are areas that, you know, if, again, if our principals were in the room, and if I'm representing our conversations accurately, they would say that that's a high priority area of need for us, is to make sure that kids have those supports.
Okay, and just, so, simplified, we're talking about people, not books, not computers, not, this is a person.
Correct.
Okay, when you say behavioral support.
Yeah.
Okay. Next was, full day preschool, do you have a figure for that?
We don't. I, I think if we went in that direction, we, we, we could only do it if it were budget-neutral. So we have half-day sections of preschool right now. The question is, could we, in a budget-neutral way, offer a full-day experience for preschool students? In other words, combining two half-day sections and make it a full-day experience for kids and staff. But I think more and more communities, it feels like, are going in that direction, you know? And I'm, you know, I hear from community members, from parents, that good preschool education is in short supply. I think it seems to be, anecdotally at least, a growing need, a growing interest.
Okay. And my last question, Marty, thank you again. Can you talk about athletics fully funding? That's line item three on your bullet point.
Sure. We have an athletic budget that historically has relied on fees, gate revenue, supportive booster clubs. And, you know, I think in our, in everybody's perfect world, we would, the athletic budget would be more fully funded by the, by the general fund, and less reliant on the fees that we collect from families.
And, but there's no, I appreciate that. That's, I don't want to characterize, is there any, has there been any talk or thought about how specifically that would work? Like, what, because you, when you talked about the full day preschool, you talked about it being budget-neutral.
Yeah.
Is that, is that the same picture for athletics? Or we're not, we're talking about a fully funding athletic picture, or regime, would be budget-neutral? Or are we talking about asking for something that's going to have to jump in?
Definitely. So, so these slides, I'm glad you brought these up, because this slide right here is my number-one concern about this budget. So 1.428 doesn't let us do any of that. Most of this should be done. So if I, if it was basically, you know, if we didn't worry about anything as it relates to money, which we obviously do, try to fit it in, you know, basically tells us, I'm not doing any, if nothing on the left is getting done, unless something breaks for me on the right. Meaning, I'm going after parents for fees, I'm going to jack up all your, all the fees on, on your sports, or something, I'm going to have less kindergarten classes, we're going to go from 10 to 9 to 8, because people aren't coming to our town, not good for our town. Something has to break on the right to make the left work. I don't like, that is my biggest concern over what we, we talked a lot about this, and we talked, we're on about two years now, talking about it, fully funding athletics. So we've gone through this in years, we've started to fund it, and to slowly work dollars in there to properly, you know, fund via either, right now, it's being funded via boosters and different other areas, aspects that create opportunities and, you know, basically create sporting events, travel, uniforms, and all of that. So we've chatted many a times to bring that in, but it would not be budget-neutral, it would be adding a significant amount of dollars into the athletics budget and bringing that in. And you either have to increase our funding, or we got to go get it from parents, or you got to take it from somewhere else within the general fund, meaning there's going to be less teachers, more athletics. So it's got to come from somewhere. And the big problem with it, not a problem within this budget, but, Tom, mo, most of our budget, it's 80, I think it's 82% of our budget, is all contractual. So if you have our $44 million, the majority of it's already accounted for.
Salaries and fixtures.
Salaries and whatnot. So there's not a lot of wiggle room, if, unless you increase the class sizes, you know, by decreasing the amount of staff, the FTEs. So, you know, going back to the, this slide is, this is, I don't like having all that on this slide, because I think a lot of that needs to be done, including the ones that you just brought up. So this is the exact conversation we had in our meeting, and I was the one bringing up the things you brought up, going, you know, this, these things seem important, why aren't we doing them? But we're kind of constrained by that 1.428 increase, to be able to do that, because 1.332 of it's going to contractual things. So it's either cut teachers and do this, or keep level services, same class sizes, and don't do this.
I, I thank you, that's very clear.
That makes sense.
Yeah, it makes perfect sense, and I especially want to thank you for explaining it in terms of one side kind of pulling against the other, kind of you think of the old thing where you have one list of things, and another list of things are relating, you draw the lines connecting. So that was very helpful, the way you explained it, that, that this one is kind of, we have to do one to, to fund the other, or vice versa. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Andrew?
Thank you all for being here. This is, I'll just share some observations. This is a very challenging year. All you have to do is read the reminder, and see that all these other towns are, like Amherst, or East Long Meadow, or Wilbraham, they're all like making cuts and are unable to have a level service. I think that the relationship that the four of you, Tom, Lynn, Marty and Ian have, is something that the town is very lucky to have. I appreciated Tom and Marty inviting me to come personally explain a lot of the challenges that school committee's been having, and I learned a lot from that. You know, at the outset, Lynn told me, I think, that for the town side to have a level service, she would need like the school side to have an increase limited to 2.75%. When the 3.2% came in, I know that she assiduously started making adjustments, making cuts, to try to accommodate schools as much as possible. You know, things like OPEB are basically select board policies that are basically out the window. But I actually support all of this, because obviously the schools are clearly the most important department, and therefore, the most important part of our town, and the most important part of the budget. The one, I think I would remit, be remiss if I didn't say, what people know, but I, I would just want to convey what we're hearing as select board members from the town, because you guys do a great job of advocating for our schools and our kids. And we're hearing not only that, but also from the whole town. The one department that I feel pretty strongly, that's been mentioned tonight, needs to be protected and not cut, and perhaps augmented as much as possible, is the DPW. And I think, you know, if there's one department in our town that's the closest to being in a crisis situation, it's not the police, it's not the fire, it's not the schools, it's the DPW. And, you know, if you ask yourself, where is the best value we can get for the next dollar we spend? I honestly think, from everything I've learned, that it's the DPW. And I know that all of our interests are aligned, the DPW does so much for the schools, you know, it's, it's to, and our kids, they, they maintain our fields, which has been a big challenge. They maintain our buildings, and when we have a lack of resources, you get issues with non-functional equipment, like chillers, and then mold problems. They plow the streets, as been, as has been mentioned. So, you know, I really think that if there's a way, and I know this isn't a work in process, and I appreciate everyone's efforts to get us to the best solution, but I just want to convey that that's clearly what I think that the select board members are hearing a lot about, the roads, the fields especially. And I just appreciate you guys knowing that. I mean, I think, we all know the DPW is important, but it's helpful, I think, for us to emphasize how much people are telling us about it.
Thank you. And I think Josh.
Sorry, Mark.
Oh, go ahead.
Thanks, Renee. I'm learning how hard it is to be remote. It's been a while. I just want to start off with a, a general point. You know, I, I absolutely agree with Jamie, that there's a lot of things we, we could be doing, and we have a big wish list, and we have a, but we got a problem with the sound of limited funds, and as a select board, we are certainly pushed, pulled in both directions, pulled towards DPW, because that's what we're going to hear about. And we, we have a really difficult problem in this town, and, but we absolutely can never, I think what Jamie said, that the biggest thing that my always takeaway is... I think what Jamie said, the biggest thing that I always take away is if our schools fall, slide the town's slides and then we, we just keep digging our problems. So, you know, this will always be funding the schools to the extent we can is always gonna be my focus. And I hope we can get down to three to help our town though because we really, there are things that DPW suffers, the whole town suffers and including the schools. So that's more just a general comment. And I appreciate that the presentation we got today and that we're all together and be able to talk about this, I think it's really important. I had a specific question about one of, I don't, I think it, I don't know where the slide is, up or down, but on the drops in additions. Just wanted to ask what was going on with the two, there's a 0.4 and a 0.8 FTE drops on special education and I wanted to know how that, whether it was interacting with the, the addition of a para educator on the special education side. And this slide must be down further.
There it is.
Yeah, thanks.
So, start by saying it shouldn't be seen as a reduction in service. It really is just related to changing needs. So the transition support services, we are able to do a lot of that work. This is for students in that 18 to 22 range, we're able to do some of that work in-house and through a partnership with Westfield State University. The services for related to the teacher of the deaf, no longer needed again based on just changing enrollment and changing need. The para educator is a essentially tied to fulfilling students' individual education plans at the elementary level.
Yeah, thanks, Marty.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Benny. Dr. Shea, thanks for your presentation. It was pretty thorough. I guess I have a couple of comments or questions in there, but it, one of the things that I didn't see in the presentation that would be very helpful, is you highlighted anything that's been removed, you know, programs that have become passe or outdated or, you know, superfluous or whatever it is because we always see additions, but we don't see deletions or any reductions. And that certainly would help us understand, you know, we've got a new literature program, here's what we took out or whatever, whatever it may be. And, and that would certainly help me. The, the other thing that might help me is the slide you have, which is, is the per student cost relative to it. The numbers there were for 2022, it's like three years old already. I'm just wondering, you know, if, if, and I don't need that now, but, you know, if there was an update clearly going back and going forward so we can see how, not only where we stand relative to these other communities, but what our trends are relative to these other communities. I think it's important to understand, you know, are they going up, they going down, but are we going up or going down, certainly with our, with our position? Because a static number is, is interesting, but it doesn't tell as much of a story as a, as kind of a moving number. You know, the other thing that, as I was thinking about this, kind of bothered me was, I listened a lot to our state legislators, fully funding junior college and leaving elementary and primary schools, according to you, underfunded. What, what's been the interactions with the, our legislators, you know, Senator Olivera and Representative Ash and, and the other people in the legislation? Writing a letter is nice, but generally that isn't the same as going in there and pounding on their front, on their door.
Attended, this past Friday, attended a legislative luncheon. Senator Olivera's office was represented, was, was there and Rep. Ash's office was represented. And so we sat down over lunch and, and talked about a lot of the fiscal challenges we're facing. I think they, they, they're balancing competing needs, as you suggested. And I think they, they understand the, the challenge. I'm not sure, I think there needs to be a wider conversation on the mechanics, the, the mechanics behind the funding so that the formulas properly fund public education, pre-K to 12 and probably into higher ed as well. They're attentive, they've been supportive. I hope that we can continue to press for the need to increase chapter 78 for FY26. I mean, I think we, that $75 per student just puts a lot of stress and strain on us as, as a community. In terms of the, the per pupil expenditures, sort of once the books are closed and the data is available at the state, they, they make some tools available that, that gather MCAS scores and per pupil expenditures and enrollment. And sometimes the tools lag behind the fiscal year. So this was the latest and greatest pulled recently from, from the, from the web, from a, a tool that Desi makes available to us.
I, I would say though, that based off of all the other minutia that we've gone through with regards to, you know, different school districts and what they've done with paras and whatnot, I would say we're, I bet we're significantly in the lead now. So, you know, from a, from a, they've gone up with their costs quicker than what we have. We've gone up as well because it's part of this, but I would say we're, we're probably, whether we are the lowest, I would say we're definitely on the lower side and there's probably a bigger gap. So, based off of what we, we've looked through kind of over, over the course of the last year or two.
It might be interesting to figure out how, how they knew that, you know? Is it because they're not capped at, at the two and a half cap as, as we are and they can do, I don't, I don't know what the numbers are, but might look at that. The other thing that I think I'd be remiss if I just didn't reiterate what, what Ian drew in, I think Josh said also about, you know, the need to balance our, all the departments in our, in our town, whether it's the DPW or even the adult center or, you know, whatever it is with, with the schools. I, I think that, you know, we, we all need to understand, and I think Erica, I'd use a different phrase from what she did, but, you know, we can give the schools all the money in the world, but you won't be able to open because we'd never be able to plow the streets, you know? And, and if we ended up having to cut the DPW, we don't, we don't want to have to do that. So we've got to balance the DPW support, plowing the streets, keeping the buildings maintained and, and supporting it. And, and, you know, if 2.75% was the number, we'd love to see what you can do to, I mean, the, the percentage seems like a lot, but the actual numbers are probably, you know, $150,000 or something like that. And, you know, I would like to think that, that somewhere in a 40, $44 million budget, there's, there's that kind of money that you could find for the budget.
Thank you. Yeah, I'll add that, you know, thank you for the presentation and I really appreciate, you know, informing us about the chapter 78 and how much that's lacking. Because I know that, you know, for us, this is good for us to know too, because when we're talking to lawmakers about what our town needs, I mean, this has got to be at the top of the list or, you know, right there. Because getting that increased chapter 78, that frees up money to do some of the things that we're talking about, the list at the end of the slideshow, DPW, all of those things. So that's really important. Just a couple of questions, just for my understanding. The circuit breaker costs, you know, that obviously like really jumps out. That's about a, looks like, I think, a $3 million increase in about three or four years. What accounts for that cost? Is it just the number of students who are in need of these services or is there something else that's contributing to that like rapid increase?
It's, it's the tuition at the programs and, and some of it is an increase in the number of students here in Long Meadow that need those out of district services. So our, our out of district placement rates, I would say, are favorable. In other words, we, we try to create in district programs, which are good for kids and good for budgets. But it's inevitable, the tuition, which is regulated and set, the tuition increases, which are regulated and set by the state, have increased significantly in the last two years. 14% last year, 4% this year, which is way out of, you know, way out of bounds when you compare it to the historical increases in those areas.
Okay, so this is another area where the reimbursed costs are not keeping up with.
And, and ensuring that, you know, circuit breaker right now, it's 75% of the costs that are above the threshold. And so hoping that that 75% reimbursement rate is held. That number sometimes moves as the, as the budget works its way through the legislative process. So that's, that reimbursement rate for circuit breaker is something that we should all be tracking as well.
Okay. And then, I know that the last two years during this meeting and also I think just around the state too, a big topic was recruiting teachers and some of the difficulties that, you know, districts were having with that. You didn't mention it tonight, so is that because we've made progress in that area or something else?
I think it's, it's probably in the subtext, right? We, we, it is a stated district goal to focus on recruitment and retention of teachers, but it's in the, it's in the context of our collective bargaining agreements and ensuring that we settle contracts that attract and retain the best teachers. We have, we have high rates of retention here in Long Meadow. And we're fortunate that when people, they find Long Meadow to be a teaching home and that's a good thing. And we want that, we want to continue that. We want to continue to support great teachers and we want to continue to attract good teachers. So having collective bargaining agreements that allow us to attract the, the best teachers out there is really important. So that, that's, that's, you know, to go back to that list there, the, the variables that we're tracking is, is the collective bargaining agreements that we still have yet to settle for the 25, 26 school year.
Thank you. Anything else?
Just one kind of radical thing for fun. So on the finance committee and looking at the havoc that proposition 2.5 has wreaked on our budget and other group budgets, there is always the potential for an override. And we are at the point now where you could say, we can't fully fund what we need to maintain the town and to do some of the things you're talking about. So as we get into this point, we are implying a scarcity of this, that we, we couldn't ever sell an override. But the question is, is there something packaged up in that little thing of preschool and paying for athletics or whatever, that you might be able to make a case for it? And, and so as we look at this going forward, it's not gonna get any better. I don't think the housing market will get a lot worse, but I don't think it's gonna grow as much in the next 10 years as it has been because of interest rates and other things. So I don't think we should totally always take that off the table. At some point, to fund the level of services we think as a community we need, we may actually have to bite the bullet and just admit, we may have to go beyond the two and a half percent. I don't know if this is the year, but we should be ready in terms of like that list. There should be dollars associated with all of that to say, if we had this amount more money, we could do these things. So just like, you know, go out, make the booster clubs, tell you what they're spending. Make like, like get those dollars in place. So if we ever decide we need to pull that trigger, and Andrew's gonna say, no, but...
Well, I just want to make an observation. The reason why that it's not a great idea to override for just what you call operational budget thing is because then you have to do it pretty much every year, right? Because if you increase it for one year, we did a lot of things, then you would not be able to sustain that the next year unless you continue to do it. And that's, that's on the face of it, just extremely difficult. And one other thing is just that in the current climate with our middle school, you know, borrowing 80 or 90 million bucks is gonna be a little tough. But that, that's generally the reason why just the, an override, raising the budget, having to basically increase the operational budget so much that you have to do it every year to sustain it, that's pretty much the reason why people wouldn't want to do that.
Yeah, but at the same time, I agree, this is probably not the time for the middle school coming up, but we're also reaching a point where we're not gonna have a choice if we want to maintain services at any level.
Yeah, I think that like the legislation to lift the tax ceiling is probably a more reasonable, a more, a better solution than having towns like ours override every year to kind of maintain increased services, but I know that's a challenge.
Agree, but it is, but as people complain about DPW and about the streets and things like that, take it and see if they really care or not.
I think one of the big problems that we've had historically, and we probably don't have it this year, but we're coming up against the two and a half ceiling. In other words, we can't do an override when you get to $25 tax rate. You just legally can't do an override. And so we could do an override one year and bring us close to $25 as a tax rate. But once we hit that, short of legislative relief, you can vote all you want to, you cannot raise taxes over that level.
Yeah, but that's assuming that that's a fixed rate because we've seen ourselves go away from it. So we chose not to take the full increases for a number of years, which is one of the reasons we have less funds now. And so just as we do that, it, it, there might be a one-time adjustment. I'm just saying, don't take it off the table. We should understand what it would mean. We should understand what dollars we would get out of it and what things we could fund from it and then decide if it makes sense.
So I'm gonna take a different track, Jonathan. So for instance, the full day preschool, has there been any thought of if we charge the parents for it, could we make it a value proposition that the parents could actually pay less than they're paying for a private preschool by the town offering this and then charging a tuition for that? And then my other question is on the transportation. I don't know what the percentage is that we charge for fees to get, you know, for transportation. Are we fully maximizing that, you know, fees? And for the students that go to the, the school in West Springfield for vocational training, do they have to pay for the bus to get them to vocational training? Because they would have to pay for the bus if they wanted a bus to get from their house to the school. So is that something we choose to not do, but we could charge that if we wish to?
I'll, I'll hit a few of them and Mr. Mazza can, can chime in. So preschool, we, we operate a preschool to serve students who have been identified as, as needing special education services. So if you are three and a half years older, older, and you have been early, identified early as needing specialized instruction, you're enrolled in our preschool. And then those students go to preschool with peer role models, peer regular ed role models, who we do charge tuition to. So there is a tuition rate applied to preschool. Our ability to compete with sort of private preschools is probably limited because we're only running our preschool 180 days a year as opposed to most preschools which are open year round, so it's kind of a...
One of ours, yeah.
Yeah, it's kind of, it's, it's hard to make it an apples to apples comparison. The school committee is in the process of reviewing our fees, the fees associated with preschool and whether or not, you know, we're, we're at a, we're at a, at a good competitive point. In terms of transportation to career tech over in West Springfield, no, that is not a fee-based service. I'm not sure we would be able to charge students going to a technical education program. Let me see, Mr. Mazza say no.
No, because we have to offer them a program and that's who our primary provider is, is the lower primary value educational collaborative. So in order for them to access their educational programming, we have to provide them transportation to it since it's not here on site.
And they wouldn't necessarily need to have paid for busing to get to the high school if that were their choice because they might live within walking distance, biking distance, might have a parent to drive, et cetera. And also the times for the vocational tech vary depending on grades and programs. So students aren't necessarily gone for the whole day to those programs. They're here for part of the day and then they're being transported either to come back to school or to go to their program.
I, I have a, a daughter that lives in suburban Boston and they, the town that they live in does have a full day preschool and they do charge tuition for that. Now granted, it's not the same as Western Mass, but the tuition for that preschool is a lot less than what they would charge if they were to go to private daycare. And so there's like a long waitlist to get into that program. It's just something that that school offers at the elementary level.
Which we do right now. We're also...
No, I'm just saying if it was a full day.
Yeah, we, we might be able to sort of relatively increase the tuition if we were running preschool, running some full day sections. Again, what we would have to be careful about is you're, the tuition is, is likely not able to offset the cost of running additional sections, requiring additional staff. You'd have to charge an exorbitant amount really to make it break even or turn a profit. Yeah. So if we added, if, you know, we're, we're careful about how many sections we run at preschool because we don't want to tip ourselves into a place where we're going to need additional staff because the fees simply wouldn't cover the additional staff that we would need.
And I think I've got Dan something.
Yes, thank you. So Marty, really appreciate the, the presentation and really good questions by everybody as well. I think everyone's on the same page when it comes to certainly the DPW and the needs across the town and being sensitive to budgets. Obviously another tough year in front of us, but my question comes back to athletics. So Mr. Garrett asked some good questions, certainly agree with his points and his questions. My question really is, I guess number... My question really is, I guess number one, there's a couple, but number one, I had thought athletics was going to be fully funded based on previous conversations. So did, did something happen over the past few weeks? Were that changed? And what is the total number that we're talking about if it's not, if athletics is not being fully funded? And I'm asking these questions because I get a lot of questions like Andrew had said earlier around fields, athletics in town. And I just want to make sure that I'm, that I'm getting a clear understanding of kind of how we got to this point and really what the impact would also be. Because I know we do have to get creative. There are some fees involved, but there's a certain point here where, you know, these are, these are extracurricular activities that are crucial for our students' child development, mental health, physical health. And I think that this is an area that we should be fully supporting and looking at ways that we can fully support this. And the town needs to get an understanding and our residency to get an understanding of what does this impact mean from not fully funding athletics?
Yeah, just a quick question because one of the comments, so athletics has never been fully funded in Long Meadow. So at what point, did you hear that a part of a presentation or is that something kind of as a side note? Because I've never heard that. So it's, that one's news to me.
No, I'm saying, is it not being fully funded in terms of what's being presented in front of us?
No, no. So, so you, couple of different things. So athletics, kind of to unbundle it, you have, you know, some that's being funded by the general fund that's in, in front of you here, some that's being funded by fees that are charged parents for their child to play. They're on the freshman team JV, it's part of the fee-based services. So those fees come in. Then you have the funding from the general fund. And then you have funding from boosters for various aspects related to those sports. So you really have three different places where the, the sport is kind of collecting funding. It's creating an experience for the child, the coach, the parent. That's fabulous, but it's not coming from one source. It's coming from three different places. We're just saying kind of create some clarity around that as to how to fund it, what should be expected and kind of create a little bit more rhythm around the whole athletic experience. So, you know, they, the programs, the kids, they're getting everything they need. It's just coming from a wide range of places. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I mean, it certainly makes sense. I mean, I'm, I went through the schools, I played sports through my time growing up here at the high school as well, at Long Meadow High School. So I understand the funding sources. I want to understand what the, what it, what it looks like today based on that's in front of us. Can you, can you speak to the impacts? For the future, for the next year at least. I want to get a better understanding because I'm getting a lot of questions myself.
You, it would require a, a significant increase and hundreds of thousands of dollars really to, to fully fund it. And it would, and ultimately it would probably result in compromising other services. It, it, you know, I think we would all love to not have athletic fees. They're becoming increasingly common everywhere. It is an extracurricular. It's not part of our core curriculum, but I couldn't agree with you more, Dan. I mean, I, I think I've always said that you get more bang for your buck in athletics than, you know, maybe any other place in the budget just in terms of the number of students that you engage after school during times when they otherwise be creating mischief. So having kids on an athletic field is, is excellent. And, but to really make it fully funded so we were not reliant on fees and the generosity and support of booster clubs, it would be a game changer for the town's budget.
Can, can I just add? Because we've been, we've been talking a lot about fully funding athletics, but I think just for the group, we're also talking about getting a better handle on how the money is spent and really having like deeper conversations about what our values are around that. Because I think it can't just be about increasing the town's costs to cover those programs without us really understanding the trade-offs. Because for athletics, like as Marty said, it's a great part of the experience for kids. But like anything else, the cost can go up and up and up depending on, you know, do we pay for just uniforms or names on the back of uniforms or like whatever. So the conversations with the athletics department there have been really good and I think really need to continue. And then the other thing I would say is Marty said that fees are everywhere, which is true, but we have the highest fees by far of towns in this area. So, and we continue, we increased them last year. We're looking at increasing them this year. So we at least need to be able to reverse that trend where we're just kind of like putting more and more of the cost on families.
And in part, that's because some of those costs are not really costs that we can get around. A huge percentage of the costs that we see increasing are related to transportation. So there are some things that we just don't have as much wiggle room on when it comes to those rising costs and trying to find ways to, as, as Julie mentioned, figure out where we, what our, what our values are related to these programs and how we can make sure that we're supporting them with the limited amount of funding that we have for them while also meeting the needs of those students and, and the costs that we don't have a ton of control over is also important.
And I would say probably in each year that I've been here in Long Meadow, I think the school committee has increased its commitment from the general fund to athletics. So incrementally, we are devoting regular town funds to the athletic budget as a way to take some of the pressure off the fees. But we have, as Julie said, we had to increase fees in a few areas last year and the school committee is, right now has us gathering information so they can make an informed decision on fees for next year. But it is a, it is a pressure point in the budget that has gotten a lot of attention from the school committee and they've been asking a lot of great questions, I'd say, of us.
Yeah, and I would want to add that the culture around Long Meadow Town Athletics is, is ridiculous against any other school. I mean, my, my husband coaches tennis over in East Long Meadow. And yes, uniforms are provided and they don't have names on them and you're just handed them and then you hand them back and they're not, they're not Nike and they're not, whereas my kids played on the team here and they had to buy their own. I'm supposed to send out these harassing emails from the booster club on field club, or for field hockey because they need to raise $18,000 a year. Now, that's an interesting one because the reason they need to raise that is because they need to rent the turf field over in Holyoke. Well, we could pay for a lot of rentals for Holyoke turf field before we can build our own turf field. So it's like, like those might be places where you might want to step in for some specific things. But there is a culture of athletics that I think is, you don't want to fund that. Like you're going to, you're going to have to downsize the athletic experience to fund it reasonably in the town.
I think that, and this has been, I think, part of our conversations about this. The fact that the funding is coming from like a bunch of different sources, including boosters, where it's hard to get your hands around what exactly is happening, although Marty is trying really hard. You know, bringing it all within the budget allows us to have those conversations, I think, in a much more comprehensive way.
I do not think we have to change the athletic experience. A jersey does nothing for the athletic experience. A coach, great teammates and a great atmosphere to be able to play. So there's places where I agree with you, where maybe money is being spent outside, not the athletics, but in other areas, that maybe isn't the best use of funds, whether it's parent funds or whatever it is, which I don't think is going to affect the overall experience of the child or the parent to be able to participate in it and kind of just kind of getting a little bit more of a handle on that. That's what we're talking about on fully, fully funding it. If we don't go up with fees, then the money's got to come somewhere else in our general fund. So, you know, either you got to keep up with fees with our transportation and our obviously payroll of athletics goes up just as everything else goes up within our budget. So if you don't keep up with that within the fees, you're just taking dollars over here and just moving it over. So that's what we're going around, trying to figure it out. But I, I don't think we have to, reducing funding does not change the experience for the child. So, but it does reset the expectations of the Long Meadow parents and the Long Meadow children. But I do not think it changes the actual experience of, of, of the town athletic program. So, but it takes time to look at this stuff. So, you know, it's not something that you can just change immediately. It's going to take probably years to kind of reinvent ourself there and get organized. That's what we're talking about there.
Anything else, Dan?
Uh, very much. Thank you everyone for the, their feedback, their response. I know we're not going to solve this overnight, but again, just something that, that always comes up with residents coming to me about athletics. So I just wanted to bring it up tonight while it was in front of us. The only other question that I, that I had was, because this, this seems to come up as well, is the, the music program. So could you just, Marty, whether it's Marty or someone else, could you just kind of speak about the music program and any impacts to the program in the budget?
No impact to the program. It'll be, it'll be a level service experience in music, yeah, for next year.
Excellent. Thank you.
Okay, great. Anything else? What do you want? All right. Well, thank you, school committee for joining and superintendent and Tom. And I appreciate you being here and, you know, looking forward to where these discussions continue to go. And I know we're getting our budget presentation from town manager at our next meeting on the 24th. So looking forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate the opportunity. I'm going to, yep, close out our meeting, but thank you. We appreciate the opportunity to hear some feedback and everybody's thoughtful questions are really appreciated and help us to kind of hone our own process here on this as well. I'll adjourn a motion to adjourn. Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. Michaela?
Yes.
Estelle?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
And yes, for me as well. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
I noticed your next item was the.
Two items from now is the stabilization fund discussion.
Yeah. So they discussed the stabilization fund proposal we put for two weeks ago. Are you actually planning on voting on that tonight?
I, I think we're going to just be discussing it further.
Just discussing it further, okay. So can I have a motion for adjournment? Second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion? All in favor? All right. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you all. Thank you for joining. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So the next item is our capital improvement program recommendation. And as I said, I don't think that we have a representative from the capital planning committee here. Lynn, I think I'll turn it over to you for your capital recommendations for the FY 2026 budget.
Yeah, thank you. We unfortunately haven't received anything from capital planning committee. We also didn't get confirmation that they were attending tonight. The date has been set for quite a while. So I'm not entirely sure where they are in their process, but we are closing in on being able to submit a capital plan as part of the FY 26 budget. I am happy to present you mine, although I do anticipate it may change a little bit in terms of what I'm planning for the FY 26 budget. But I'm happy to go through it if you'd like, or we can take this up on the 24th when we have to take it up anyway.
I mean, I, I think it would help maybe to hear tonight, just, you know, to get multiple chances to talk about it and, and look at it. And Josh, you, do you have thoughts about it?
Can you just turn on screen sharing, Lynn?
Oh, yes, thanks. All right. So yeah, I'm, let me bring it up if you can just bear with me a minute to find it.
Of course.
Okay, so for FY 26, what I presented to the capital planning committee in December, it reflected both what departments had submitted, but ultimately is just what I'm proposing to fund. So as you see here in this list, $150,000 for project development. This is what really is the seed money for DPW to do a lot of engineering work that queues us up for grants and/or future capital projects. So this has been really successful and so I, I tried to fund it to the extent that we could. Project reserve funds overages generally. So if a bid comes in, because we start this so early, if a project comes in over what they had submitted for, this provides a funding source in order for them to potentially fulfill whatever that financial difference is.
Lynn, now could you actually share this one?
Oh, I'm sorry. Can you tell them out of practice here?
Lynn, this was, this was on the agenda?
No, it was not. So the way this is, this, the capital planning committee was supposed to submit you their recommendations tonight. In absence of that, this is what I submitted to them in December. I also, at that time, this was historic at this point now, I sent it to the select board when I sent it to the capital planning committee. But that was a while ago. Sorry, just bear with me, Josh.
Take your time, please.
And I can upload this after. We weren't sure if capital planning was going to come tonight with their plan. That's happened in years past. Okay, so fire truck fund, this is our annual allocation towards this. Unfortunately, I did not put any funding in for fire or police AEDs or car three replacement. I just couldn't fit those in. Same with carpet replacement throughout this town and, and school district, did not fund that. However, I did suggest funding for Wolf Swamp vestibule. This is to finish, to, to start and finish construction. We have money set aside from prior year capital that was for this purpose. The estimate has come in higher than what they have and project reserve won't cover it. We've heard a lot about the chiller at Blueberry. That's estimated at about $900,000. I have it in the plan as of now, or as of December, to be fully funded out of capital. No funding in here for the exterior wood and trim design upgrades at the police station. That, I would say though, is an area that if additional funding were available, that this is somewhere where we should look at. Glenbrook Field rebuild. This was a multi-pronged approach. We were looking to fund partial, if not all, out of, well, obviously not all out of capital because we didn't have enough anyway. But we were also applying at the same time for community preservation funding. This was when I generated this in December. Now we know that community preservation did not move this application forward. So that, that project will not be going forward in any capacity. We just, we did not get funding anywhere for it. Bliss Playground Equipment, same thing. This was to fund the town share of that land and water conservation grant. We also submitted a capital, I'm sorry, community preservation application for this. That was supported, so that will move forward. And I did not fund it through capital. Same with equipment in DPW. Unfortunately, just could not make the, the dollars work and felt like our fleet was in relatively good enough shape to continue without funding. Just a reminder, we did fund some out of ARPA at the end of the calendar year. We were running up against that deadline. We were able to buy some equipment that way. And we have been doing this with free cash as things come up. We bought a, a front-end loader in the fall. So we are making improvements, just not through capital. A significant portion of capital is the sidewalk and road paving. Sidewalk is truly just out of capital, but road paving, this is to fund the debt service related to the significant borrowing that we're doing. That is out to bid. Bids close on March 26th. This needs to stay in here in order for us to make good on that debt service payment. What I do want to call out for sidewalks though is a lot of the larger road projects have sidewalks built into it. So it doesn't mean this is all we're going to do. It just means that we've been able to look at other projects and to incorporate the sidewalks into it. And water and sewer, I have no funding in there at all for any of those projects. We are below reserve amounts in those enterprise funds and don't have any ability there to tackle those projects. This will be coming up though, not capital specific, but water sewer projects will be coming to you. In part of a larger conversation, the long-awaited water study is coming on March 24th. And we will be exhaustively discussing water sewer infrastructure projects. And stormwater, I wasn't really sure at the time in December when I submitted this, so I don't have funding here. But I will be bringing a conversation to you when we, when you do have to fully look at voting on a capital plan to fund the Raspberry Brook repair. This is an emergency. We do have funding in the stormwater reserve, although it will put us below policy levels. But we need to have a conversation about that. And that really, that sums up the entire capital plan. It is not very much for the amount of work that we really were asked to consider. So the big, the big ticket items here are the chiller. So, the big, the big-ticket items here are the chiller, that's the biggest, road paving, sidewalks, and then finishing that vestibule.
Great, yeah, thank you. And obviously, some of this is still in the works as we're still finalizing the budget as well. So, yeah, but thank you. I think it's important to kind of be looking at this, you know, a few times before we vote on it. Anything else from the board about this? Ian, anything from you or anything? No. Okay, I don't think anything from Dan or Josh either. Oh, Dan, go ahead.
Just real quick, so Lynn, is it, in regards to just communication with the Capital Committee, please remind me, but hasn't this been going on for a few years now, where it seems like we get to this point every single year, and we're just not even getting email responses or any communication back and forth in terms of their take or their recommendations as part of this process?
Yeah, most of that is accurate. We have had challenging, just interaction that, over the years. This is the first year, though, that there's been no response at all and no one attending to present to you.
So, can, so in terms of the path forward here, we still have to wait to get the recommendation?
Ultimately, it becomes the Select Board's capital plan. So, you can, we can, we'll continue to make our request to them that they submit something just so we can close out that process. But ultimately, the capital plan gets voted and adopted by the Select Board, and, and you can take Capital Planning Committees. If, if one materializes, you could take mine, or you can create your, your own or some hybrid of those.
Yeah, no, thank you. I just, it is a bit frustrating just because it is good to hear from other, you know, the other committees on, on these important items. And now, it's almost like we're just gonna have to go and do it on our own, but it's always good to get the feedback from the, the folks that are appointed to these committees.
Yep. Anything else? Thank you, Dan. Okay, nothing else, Lynn. Uh, thank you, Lynn, for presenting that. And, you know, we'll hear more about it on March 24th. And then, the next item is a continuation from our last meeting, the discussion about the operating stabilization fund policy and our conversation around the Finance Committee's proposal and then kind of, you know, the proposal presented to us by Lynn and Ian, which has kind of, you know, modified that proposal a bit. And I think we had a really good discussion last meeting and wanted some, you know, maybe some time to think about it more and then come back and continue that discussion. So, you know, I'll, I'll, I guess, let folks make comments or, you know, ask questions if, you know, if they like to share kind of where their thinking is now on this policy. Andrew?
Are we going to, are we working from this document that was in the agenda? Is, basically, is this your Lynn suggestion on how to change it? Or update it, rather?
If I, I mean, I'll actually let Ian speak to it. He made the adjustments based on the conversation at our last meeting.
The directive that I understood from you specifically, Andrew, was to change one key thing. The interest calculated is an available revenue source for the next fiscal year was changed to maybe. I thought that was the directive that we received to change it for.
I see. So, I think it's perfectly fine to start, use this document as a starting point. I, if we're going to do that, I actually, this'll be a great way to just go into the discussion. I, I have like four basic edits, basically suggested edits. I know that only the, is the, the yellow part the part that's new and everything else is from the prior?
Correct.
So, here are some suggestions. I didn't under fund balance, if you go to the bold fund balance. I didn't, my understanding was always that the goal was to have it between 5% and 10% of the general fund operating revenue. Is that, was I wrong? Is it seven and a half just is the middle point and that's what?
So...
Because maybe that should be 5% to 10% instead of seven and a half percent there.
The problem that you're, you're seeing is that there are two different policies. There's the general reserves policy, and then there's the operation stabilization fund policy. We're reviewing specifically the operating stabilization fund policy. In the general reserves policy, it does state 5% to 10% of operating revenues. So, that's where the misconception is.
I see. So, that's, you know, if it's, it was decided in the past by the Select Board, and it's, it's basically a moot point because of the way it's practiced. It's, it's fine. Another suggestion, just for the consideration of all, is the minimum balance at the time this was done was 2 million. It seems like that might be inadequate, especially since it's far below the 5% minimum that we are aiming for, and certainly below the 7.5% minimum. We might consider increasing the 2 million to 3 million. Another thing to mention is the maximum balance. There really is no maximum balance, like, just like we have, I've sometimes gone below the 5%. We can sometimes, like, we are now above the 5, the 10%. So, we might want to just take out the maximum balance. These aren't, you know, hu- huge edits, and I'm not wedded to any of them. Though, the last thing I would open up, you know, ask for advice on is in the yellow section where, and this is the main point, of how we're gonna use interest on the operational stabilization fund. It says, "The interest calculated may be an available revenue source for next, next year's, next fiscal year's capital." I would suggest expend, capital expenditures and this addition of operating budget. I think that's the main point of debate. For example, I personally would not, I personally would feel it would be good to restrict it like in the way that the Finance Committee, Eric is still here, suggested to capital expenditures, which we know we are pretty much always going to be behind on. And by doing this, we avoid running into a situation where we're tempted to use the interest on things that become recurring, essentially, but...
So, just to make sure I understood you. So, we would redline and/or operating budget and change it to capital expenditures?
I'm not saying we have to do that. That's just my opinion at this moment, but I'm sure my colleagues have thoughts as well.
Yeah, Mark, go ahead.
I'll, I'll reiterate and support that. I think we should not be using interest for, for operating budget. And I would, I would support crossing out the and/or operating budget. The one thing here that concerns me is if you state a maximum, which we're actually over now, how can you state that the maximum shall be? If we don't say, "And if it goes over that, here's what we're gonna do with it." You know, I, I think we need to have a, a process by which we bring it to that 10% maximum, if in fact we want that. And if we don't, because we may not, because general reserves are always a good thing to have, then we should strike this maximum balance statement. But it's difficult to have a maximum balance statement if you don't say, "What does it take to do that?" Does that mean we should be transferring money out of the, the general, general reserves because they're over 10%? And if we transfer it out, where do we transfer it to? Because it's one-time, one-time revenue. So, you know, tho- those are, those are my two significant comments. The, the other thing, I guess, I'll, a comment on a little bit is why? Is it because we need additional capital? And if it is, then this ought to be strictly to supplement our, our capital budget. My understanding is capital is two, still 2.7% or something.
3%.
3% of our, of our tax revenue, I guess is what it is. You know, and if, and if that's not sufficient, then, you know, that, this is good. But so far, I, I don't see that, that that percentage isn't sufficient or that we can't budget for that amount. In other words, if, if our budget is so tight that we're struggling to find money for capital, then we should be reducing that 3% to something else and then using this as a supplement. You can't, you can't say, "Capital shall be 3% of your operating budget," and then ignore that year after year after year. Say it's, capital is gonna be targeted at, you know, 2% minimum, and if need be, see the operating sta, the general reserve policy for potential supplement to the capital.
Thank you. So, I, I think that, in this discussion at least, I am hesitant to touch the language around fund balance because I still see these as two different issues, like what to do with the fund balance when it goes into excess of 10%. And I think that's a different conversation. And something that I think I would honestly like guidance or, you know, recommendation or the Finance Committee to take a look at. And I, I think I'd really like us to, you know, focus on the interest conversation because I think that's really what, you know, we really got, you know, proposal from, from the Finance Committee and from, from our town staff and what we really had discussion about in our last meeting. I, you know, I think, I, I still kind of go, I think the 7.5%, that was something that we were talking about, whether that was a good place to be. I think that that, that is a good place to be. And then, I think in terms of the, the actual language here, I, I still kind of keep, I, I go back to what I said at the last meeting where I really do think that this should be allocated towards capital expenditures. But again, with the reality of our town budget, with how difficult it can be, we may have these extraordinary expenses. And when those extraordinary expenses come up, I would like for us to have flexibility because we have such little flexibility elsewhere in our budget. And I think last year's curriculum ask was, is a great example of that. And I would have liked it if we could have funded it through this rather than, you know, the route that we went. So, you know, in terms of language, I still would like for it to say something to the effect that it should be, you know, devoted to capital expenditures, but with, you know, the option of, you know, if there's like an extraordinary circumstance or expense, to be able to put it towards that just because of how inflexible our budget is. I'm sorry, Josh has had his hand up here, so I'm gonna go to him.
Yeah, so on the, the fund balance, I'm fine waiting on getting advice, the recommendations or guidance from the Finance Committee. I think that if it is above 10%, I think we should treat the excess the same as we're treating this interest, although I do think it's kind of moot because any year we're around 10, we won't fund the stabilization fund and it'll probably drop below 10 as our budget goes up. So, I think it's mostly moot, but it is, I agree with Mark that if you have a maximum, you gotta say what happens. But the, I, I think I'm kind of leaning toward beneath the saying on the, the and/or operating budget. I think I mentioned this at the last meeting. I would be willing to support it, some sort of limitation, like a one-time expense or something, just to give us a little more flexibility. But I, I, and part of it is, I also think we have to just kind of trust the, the wisdom of our, the board and our, our future selves and our future colleagues. And this policy can be reviewed every three years, so if it doesn't work, if something's, if it's being, if we see it inching over into the operating side, then that isn't good. But I don't think it will. I, I think that if we, we know where the holes in our budget are, and I think it will fall into the things that need to be done that we fall behind on, which is kind of what brought this whole thing about together. But if, if the board, if the feelings of the board are, "We limit the capital," I, I'll also be okay with that. But I think I would like some flexibility if we can keep it.
Yep, thank you, Josh. And, and just, your comment about the fund balance and the 10%. I also think that part of what came up in our last conversation was that we should have a conversation about whether it should be at 10% still or whether that should increase because the costs of repairs and everything are increasing. So, I think we do need to just take a look at all of that altogether.
I think it's a re, a great reason to raise the minimum, as Andrew was saying. But I, yeah, if, if we go above 10%, you know, we're gonna start talking about a large amount of money that I, I don't think we would ever get to considering how our budget's going. But also, if we're getting up that high, would we really even put money into the oper, operational stabilization fund for repairs when we could be doing forward-thinking repairs now? Which doesn't, I, I see what you're saying. We're not under, we do need to be prepared for catastrophic things, but we shouldn't be worrying about that to the detriment of not doing the things that are on our plate now.
Yes, yeah, I mean, I, I agree with that generally, but I, I mean, it is there for the catastrophic event. And so, I, I do think that we do need to look at what that catastrophic event looks like in 2025 in the years going forward and what that would cost. Mark?
Dan, Dan, I don't know, he did have to.
Okay.
Yep.
He's up, he's up. Give him a chance.
Go ahead, go ahead, Dan.
Oh, thanks, Mark. Yeah, I, I, I agree. I mean, there's a lot of good points tonight. I just still can't get past personally the, I just feel like we need to have that flexibility that we, we've talked about. And I think that, like I said last meeting, just the Finance Committee and, and what Erica had presented to us, having, just being creative, again, in a town like Long Meadow, we have, we have funds that are sitting here that are not, that are not being used, but every single meeting, it seems like we have another issue popping up, whether it's the roads deteriorating, needs in our schools, other needs across town, maintenance. I think probably 90% of the decisions for these funds will go towards capital improvements, but I would, I just think we do need to have that flexibility and, and to make the decisions that are necessary. And to Josh's point, maybe there's some, you know, three years from now, we can make adjustments. But I do think there's a lot of checks and balances in place already within town government and at a certain point in time. And we, we need to start looking at how we can leverage these funds and, and put the money to work. Otherwise, we're literally losing money just by having it sitting in here. And I think that we need that flexibility. So, I, I, I fully support having more flexibility, and I also support allowing the Finance Committee to take another look as well and provide some more guidance if, if need be. But for me, it's really just having more flexibility. We have so many issues across town that, that need to be addressed, and that's, that's where I stand. But again, I appreciate everyone's commentary and Andrew for bringing, for bringing this up with your points initially as well. Thank you.
Yeah, Mark.
Yeah, I, I really think there'd be an issue with using one-time money for operating budget. It's, it's a longstanding policy, not only in the town of Long Meadow, but of general budgets and all around, that says, "Don't use one-time money for operating budget." We have enough of a capital budget every year. You know, it's, it's, it's 3% of our, of our tax base and our, or our tax revenue. Our tax revenue was $64 million, so 3% is 1.8, 1.9 million dollars, something like that, that we can more than use this for the capital, which is one-time, and always say that if there's a, a problem, we don't deal with it. But I want to take this opportunity to talk about another option. I talked to Lynn about it, and hopefully she's done, or Ian's done his homework on it. But there's a, there's a line item in our budget called employee health insurance retirees. This year, it's 1.5 million dollars. We spent a million and a half dollars on health insurance for retirees. Bear with me, and we're getting to, to a place here. We also have an OPEB fund that's now funded at $8,320,000 as of the end of last year. Okay? You know, at, at, at 4% interest, that spins off $300,000 a year from the OPEB fund. Way back when, when we formed this OPEB fund, one of my comments to Paul Pasterzik was, "So, when do we start to get the, to use the interest to reduce that million and a half dollars that we put into OPEB funding every year?" And he said, "Well, you can't do it when you've got $10,000 in the, in the OPEB fund. You can't even do it with a million dollars." But we've now got $8.3 million in there. And maybe we can use the interest from that fund, $330,000, reduce the line item, that's a $1.5 million line item, to free up money so we can fund our capital the way we should be funding our capital, that we say we're gonna fund our capital. And I don't know, Lynn, if you've been able to move forward with that and look at it, you know. That doesn't mean we shouldn't continue to fund OPEB. So, there's kind of a wash here. Do we fund OPEB or, you know, not? But... a wash here. Do we fund OPEB, or, you know, not? But, but, you know, because ultimately, if OPEB was fully funded, we'd be saving a million and a half dollars on our operating budget. That would solve all of our problems right now if we had OPEB fully funded. A million and a half dollars is a lot of money. So I'm, I'm gonna stop talking and find out is, is there potential use of $300,000 from our OPEB interest to offset that million and a half dollar line item?
So, there's nothing within the Mass General of Rules that state that we can't take money out of the OPEB trust? I'm waiting to hear back from my contact at Mass Primm, who holds the investments for the OPEB trust fund, because I'm not sure about the liquidity of these assets, and if it's even available at the time to take it out. So I'll have an answer for you at the next meeting.
But, but Ian, it seems to me that if OPEB was fully funded, we'd absolutely take the mon, I mean, that's why it was formed, to take the money out to pay for employee health insurance. All I'm saying is, don't wait till it's fully funded. Start now when it's partially funded, because we need the $300,000 of, of revenue. That's all.
And, and maybe, you know, this is something maybe we could talk about at a different meeting, when it's actually on the agenda, but I want us to stay focused on what's, what's, what we're talking about right now, and what's on the agenda.
I agree. I mean, he's an interesting point, but I think that to stay, to stay on target. I, I have a simple suggestion, maybe I can get support for this. I, perhaps we could edit it to say, next year's capital expenditures or extraordinary non-recurring expenses, and that would basically cover the, that...
Yeah, I mean, that's kind of, that's kind of like, yeah, that's, that's kind of what I was thinking too. I mean, I, I think Josh brought up a good point where, you know, what is there for us to put this money towards? Usually, then, capital expenses. So when there is something extraordinary that happens, like, we will know, and, and...
And then whoever's here can make a good judgment about that. I, I just make one more point about what Josh said about when the money goes over 10, when we exceed the 10%. I mean, it, this whole, it's, it's all kind of moot, to be honest. Like, at any point, any Select Board in the future, any town meeting can decide on it, with a two-thirds vote to use this money for something. I think that all of this interest discussion, all it really does is it gives Lynn the knowledge that she has the capability of like, you know, using it for this. I'm sure Lynn would agree. So, any, at any point, this, you know, all the millions that are in here right now, if we really felt we needed it, any town meeting could decide to do it with two-thirds. So, anyway, just making that point.
Okay. So what I take from that is a couple of things. So, if we're thinking about this in a long-term solution of fixing this as we go, I, I would say that there are a couple of things that we want to revisit in the three-year renewal period for this. I would say, should there be language that determines whether or not we fund the stabilization fund with free cash? That's something that's not within the current policy itself, and that would help us determine if, in the future, if, say, we hit our maximum policy balance, do we need to fund it more? Or, once we hit the target balance, do we fund it? What should the maximum balance be, and what happens when you reach this? And I had another point about the emergency provision, but it sounds like with the extraordinary non-recurring expenses, that would cover that. So it would be those two points. What should the maximum balance be, and what happens when you reach this? And should there be language that determines whether or not we fund the stabilization fund with free cash?
Can I have a follow-up? Are you saying that if we're over the 10%, we're still have a policy of putting in like 500, whatever it is?
There's, there's nothing within the pol-
There's no policy, right?
There's nothing within the policy that states that we can't, so...
We can or cannot?
Funds may be transferred into the operation stabilization fund from any general fund source, including taxation and free cash. That is the only-
That's the simple, that's the only directive.
That's the only directive that is established.
I mean, I think that if it's over the 10%, then it doesn't make, I don't think we should, like, future Select Boards should feel compelled to do it, but it, it seems like there's no directive to do it either. So it could, we-
That's what I take from the discussion that we're having, so...
But actually, should future Select Boards be prevented from doing it?
I, 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 I don't know, I don't know that we need to make rules for thing, I mean, people can dis, future Select Boards can decide how they think best, I mean, decide what they think is best, in, in that, and, and frankly, what to do when it goes over 10%, which might not last long. You know, there've been more years that I've been here that it's been below 5% than above 10%, so, um, there's a lot to talk about, but...
So just, just for the sake of our time, the fund balance section, I do think it's important to talk about it, but it's not as time-sensitive. That's already passed, that's existing. This yellow section, interest on fund balance, this, just to remind you, everyone, this doesn't exist right now. Your first draft of the warrant is on the 24th, you vote it and close it on the 7th. If you want to use this money for something, you, we need some direction from you in turn, in a way of either a vote tonight, but absolutely a vote on the 24th, because we're gonna run out of time if you want to use that money for a warrant article for annual town meeting. You don't have to, we can wait and do it in the fall.
Yeah, I mean, I, I completely agree. I think the fund balance, like whether the, the Finance Committee and Ian, you guys can take more of a look at it and come back to us at a later time. That's, that's perfect. The interest on fund balance, right now, I think the, what Andrew suggested, sounds the, like, the best language to me. So, I don't know if people are opposed to this, but maybe what we can do is, I, I don't know if folks want to take another meeting to think about this, but we can come back with that language. People can maybe think about if, you know, if there's anything that they want to change in terms of that language, and we take a vote on this at our next meeting.
I mean, I feel like if there's consensus, would it help Lynn to get this squared away? Or, I mean, or does it not matter to you?
Yeah, no, I would love consensus tonight on that language, and then we can clean it up and bring it back to you for, for a vote, but I would like consensus that the majority of you want that type of language in there, the extraordinary non-recurring expenses.
Yeah, and is this something that we would need to run by Town Council?
No.
That language, okay.
So capital expenditures or extraordinary non-recurring expenses?
Can I ask, Andrew, how does that differ from allowed uses of funds? Is extraordinary non-recurring expenses?
Well, it makes sure it's not, it's basically-
Emergency urgent or unforeseen expenses?
Like I said, this whole discussion, in my mind, is kind of moot, but basically, it's, to your point, it's excluding it from the operating budget, which I think we all agree it shouldn't be. So that's basically what we're achieving with this.
Unfortunately, I don't think we all did agree. You and I agree, but, but I, I just think that next year's capital budget, up to 100% of interest, carries that, because we can always and always could use it for emergency urgent or unforeseen expenses, which to me, is not different necessarily from non-recurring extraordinary expenses.
Which is why I said-
So it's already there.
When I asked Lynn, why are we, it gives Lynn the, go ahead, Lynn.
So I would say, I would, I would, I would say that, having sat at the seat that I was sitting in last fall, or last, whenever it was, about the literacy, I made that argument that it was an unforeseen expense, and the board didn't end up agreeing there. And I think the language about extraordinary non-recurring, I, I could see the literacy curriculum having fit better into that definition than number, the definition number one there. But it's your, it's your prerogative, you can do what you want. But that's just where, from where I'm sitting, that would be, have been clearer for me.
So it seems to me, then, the better-
Let me speak for Zane.
Go ahead, Josh.
My problem with using it on the operation fund for the literacy last year was the, the rest of the sentence, for which you would know, piece of order, alternative funding sources, that absolutely could have come from the school budget, general fund, whatever. And so, I, I think that this, this would just give us another tool on something like that, where there, there could be another place we could pull it from, but we're gonna get it from here, if it's a extraordinary expense.
Yeah, I agree, Josh.
Mark, if I may, I think what is, in my mind, is the difference between the allowed use of funds and the interest on fund balance, is the monies from the stabilization fund may be the principal and the interest, and the interest on fund balance is only the interest. I'm thinking that in a presentation to the general public, it would come across better if it was just the interest and we're not touching the principal, versus the opposite.
Fair statement.
So Lynn, is this, is this enough of a consensus if we have this language and then take a vote on it at our next meeting?
I think so. Do you feel like we have a general consensus, at least enough to bring you back a draft to vote?
Okay.
Just, just for, if you go back to last year, though, would the interest have been enough to pay for the literacy program? Because that's all that's, would be allowed by this change.
Right, and so, at the time it came to you, no. At the time of town meeting, yes. A lot changed within that timeframe.
It's like a $200,000.
Which speaks to the flexibility. Like, there just isn't a lot.
Okay, great. All right, thank you, everyone. Anything else? Or, Josh, do you have anything else?
Nope.
Okay, great. All right, and correspondence, any comments on correspondence? Okay. Since there's no further comments, I will move that we adjourn.
Second.
Any further discussion? And Lynn, I'll let you call the, we'll call the-
All right, uh, Venite?
Yes.
Andrew?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
All right, just thank you, everyone, and we'll see you, everybody, on March 24th.
Thank you.